All right, we're going to bring this meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. If you would, if y'all would mind standing. Do the pledge of allegiance, and if you would remain standing afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Caldwell, would you mind saying a few words, please?
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and I would like to thank you for your presence here this evening. And we pray as always that you will watch over and protect all those who attend. We pray long that everything that's tonight will be in accordance with your will, that you will bless everything that proceeds and goes forth here tonight. We pray this prayer in you in Jesus' holy and precious name.
If you would just have a moment of silence, any of our neighbors may have passed away. All right, thank you. Please have a seat. If you've got your cell phones, please either cut them off or turn the ringers down. At this time, if the commissioners have a conflict of interest or anything on the agenda tonight, please let us know. If not, we shall move right along. Next up is the adoption of the agenda. Have a motion to accept it as it is.
I'll make that motion.
All right, second. Next up is a certificate of appreciation for Susan Hall. Susan here to see. Hello, Susan. I'm sorry, do you want to have anybody for general public comment? Did we? For a regular public or for the? For both?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, if you'd like to, go ahead and... Sorry, Susan, keep your seat.
Requesting the time, I didn't realize. I wanted to thank you and the police department for presenting the rules for four-way stops. And I'd like to ask you to further please present them for bicyclers who constantly ignore stop signs and for pedestrians to let them know that they're supposed to be facing traffic, not walking with their backs to it. I've seen some close calls. I also wanted to ask if anybody had approached the garbage collection service as I suggested several months ago. I talked to one of the drivers and asked if it wouldn't be cheaper if they just made one pass through town instead of two. And the reason for that is if you have garbage cans on both sides of the road, they have to come through town twice. Now, doesn't it make sense that it might be cheaper if they only had to come through one time with all the cans on the same side of the road where the big grabber is? That's all. This makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'll ask anybody else emailed, did I get a response or tried to contact us electronically? All right, if not, we'll go back to you, Susan. Susan Hall, we have a certificate of appreciation for you, ma'am. And if you would, please come up here. This is from the board for your loyal and dedicated services, member of the planning board for town of Cape Carteret. We understand you'll be stepping down, but you know, the biggest thing, greatest thing anybody can give is their time. That's the most valuable thing we have as U of D. And you chose to donate your time to our town. And I just wanted to send you this one out.
Thank you very much.
And next up, well, we'll talk about the planning board, the planning board report. Mrs. Wax.
All right, good evening, mayor, commissioners, people of Cape Carteret. I'll be briefing on behalf of Susan because, as you know, she's leaving. She has fulfilled her term with us. It was great serving with her. So at our last meeting, we reviewed the rezoning request for 123 Taylor Notion Road, which you all will discuss tonight. We did agree that this was consistent with our newly adopted land use plan. The previous to this, the planning board had worked hard on the density map and to revise the R10M ordinances to make these decisions straightforward in anticipation that this would happen, not just from this applicant, but in the town in general in the future. So again, you all will discuss this further tonight. And then additionally, we did continue to work on the stormwater ordinances that will be presented at a later date. But on a personal note, I apologize that I'm unable to fulfill my term for the planning board, but it has been a pleasure and an honor to serve with you all, and I appreciate the opportunity. That's all I have pending your questions.
Any questions? Well, thank you as well for serving on the board. Next, the consent agenda. Have a motion to approve.
I'll make a second.
Second, all in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. And next up is the rezoning request for 123 Taylor Notion Road from R30 to R10. So we want to go into public hearing first. Would you like to give a summary?
Yeah, I'd like to just present the item to the board so that the public is educated about the item and then open the public hearing if that's...
That'll be fine, thank you, sirs.
Thank you, mayor, Baker commissioners, members of the public. Tonight, the board will consider a request to rezone approximately 2.3 acre parcel located at 123 Taylor Notion Road from R30 to R10M. It may be a little bit difficult to see, and I apologize for that. It's the parcel right here, just a little bit north of the entrance to Star Hill Golf Course on the east side of the road. We've also got the zoning map as well. And it's this parcel right here. All of the yellow is R30. The request is to rezone it to R10M. A little bit about the parcel. It's 2.3 acres. It has approximately 562 linear feet of frontage on Taylor Notion Road. The adjacent properties to the north, there is a four-unit multifamily structure that is zoned R30. To the south and the east, the Star Hill Golf Club, that's zoned R30. To the west, we have two properties across Taylor Notion Road. One is a vacant tract owned by the Forest Service. That's about 5.3 acres. That's also zoned R30. And then finally, there is a single-family home right across Taylor Notion Road, approximately 1.2 acres, also zoned R30. In the current R30 zoning district, it allows single-family residential use with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. It also allows governmental, institutional, recreational, and utility uses, but does not allow any other types of residential use, does not allow any commercial use or industrial use. The R10M zoning that is requested also allows single-family residential development. It has a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, so a little bit less than the R30. It also allows multifamily residential use. In the R10M zoning, the minimum land area per unit is 7,920 square feet. That equates to five and a half square units per acre. Thus, this parcel could accommodate 12 multifamily units if the rezoning moves forward. Like R30, R10M does not allow any commercial uses, does not allow any industrial uses, does allow governmental, institutional, recreational uses. Back in October of 2022, the Board of Commissioners, upon a recommendation from the planning board, adopted revised standards for any multifamily residential development that might occur in the community. There's a list of that in the board's packet. I'll hit some of the key requirements for you. Any multifamily developments that are in the R10M zoning district would have to have a minimum lot size of two acres. Again, 5.5 units per acre. There is a maximum allowance of four connected units per structure. So for example, in this particular case, 2.3 acre parcel, maximum of 12 units, you might see three buildings that have four units per building, for example. But you wouldn't see any buildings with five or six or what have you. Our ordinance only allows townhouse-style multifamily development, does not allow units to be stacked on top of each other, so they have to be adjacent to each other, next to each other. There are 40-foot front setbacks, 30-foot side and rear setbacks. There's a minimum width of 22 feet per unit. Importantly, there's also a requirement that the parking be either within an attached garage or in a driveway allocated to the individual unit. So there are no common parking lots allowed under the town's R10M zoning. There's also a requirement for a 20-foot natural or planted landscaping buffer around the project. And it also involves the review of the site plan by the planning board before it ultimately goes to the Board of Commissioners for final approval. So it's important tonight for the board and for the public to recognize that tonight you're being asked to consider whether this parcel is appropriate for the R10M rezoning. If you deem that it is acceptable for R10M zoning and approve that rezoning, the applicants at some point in time would come back to the staff with a formal site plan. We would be checking to make sure it meets all of those requirements that I just listed and then some. That site plan would then be reviewed by the planning board, and then ultimately it would be up to the Board of Commissioners to make a decision whether or not that site plan complies with the town's various requirements. So tonight is just the rezoning of the parcel. It's not a discussion of any specific development plan, and there has been no specific development plan submitted at this point in time. So that would come later if the rezoning occurs. There are several policies included in the town's CAMA and Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Most notably, the plan specifically advocates for additional housing options in the community. So any rezoning to R10M anywhere in the community would help advance that goal. The CAMA and Comprehensive Land Use Plan also talks about locating any new multifamily housing, either in the triangle area as part of the town center concept or on the fringes along the main roads, Taylor Notion Road, Highway 24, Highway 58. So in that sense, this rezoning request is consistent with the town's CAMA and Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I have included in the ordinance, included in your packet, a consistency statement and a statement of reasonableness, essentially cites the concerns that I just raised about the CAMA and Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Those statements were reviewed by the planning board at their meeting on April 18th. As Ms. Wax, Mrs. Wax mentioned, the planning board does recommend approval of the rezoning. It was a unanimous vote of the planning board at that April 18th meeting. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have now or as the discussion continues. And Mr. Mayor, if you're so inclined, it's appropriate to open the public hearing whenever you'd like.
Okay. All right, I'll look for a motion to go into a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor? All right, we are now in public hearing. We have six total. I added Mrs. Holtz to the list that are going to speak, so I'm just going to write down the list. So Ginger Gold, if you would, please step up to the podium.
Good evening, I'm Ginger Gold, reside at 136 Pine Lake Road. It is with great disappointment that I stand before you today to once again comment on a proposed action that was vehemently rejected by residents in Cape Carteret less than one year ago. The 123 Taylor Notion property was one of two specific locations where owners and developers were requesting the building of townhouses via special use permit. Homeowners living in and around Star Hill neighborhood came out in droves, making it clear to you that multifamily housing was not welcomed at either of those sites. Although tonight, the method to accomplish this initiative is different, rezoning versus special use permit, the goal to build multifamily housing at this location remains. Once again, you have been made aware that residents are not in favor of eliminating R30 zoning. Therefore, it is quite perplexing and honestly a bit scary that you are being confronted with voting on this zoning change. When purchasing property, one always considers the type of zoning in the area. Zoning for single-family homeowners is critical to wise investment. So if you vote to rezone this lot, which is in the midst of single-family zoning, then you will be undercutting homeowner's security and protection that single-family zoning provides. This action would be very disturbing as it would create a precedent. Once you give single-family zoning away, it is near impossible to deny similar requests. Please understand, your decision tonight is not simply about 123 Taylor Notion Road. If you vote yes for this, then you open the door for owners of two-acre and larger R30 zone properties to surmise one can have their lot changed to R10M zoning if they so desire. For example, owners of the 320 Star Hill Drive four-acre lot may become emboldened to request rezoning, especially since both of these locations have the same owners. Your decision tonight has exceedingly far implications for the stability of Cape Carteret. Managing expectations for zoning is critical to eliminating a major town shift from well-respected, peaceful, quality living to a compromised mismatch of residential housing. Adding medium or high-density housing creates many unintended consequences, not the least of which is increased traffic, thus requiring additional police and EMS services, et cetera. One final note, within extremely close proximity to Cape Carteret, there are many multifamily housing units, with more going up. The need to build these units in the actual town of Cape Carteret simply does not exist. It is in the best interest of us all to maintain the high residential standards our town currently enjoys. That is why the majority of homeowners live here. Therefore, in order for residents to continue resting in the protection that single-family zoning provides, as well as honoring the vast majority of residents who clearly reject this multifamily housing, and to keep Cape Carteret a special peaceful town it is, then please have the wisdom to vote no to changing 123 Taylor Notion Road from R30 to R10M.
All right, next up is Darrell Buchanan.
Hello, my name's Darrell Buchanan. I live in Arden Oaks. And one thing that's become quite obvious to me is that the traffic has increased substantially in the short period of time that I've lived there. And I think that Taylor Notion Road is fast becoming, you know, a high-speed bypass because it's sometimes see fleets of dump trucks and delivery trucks far exceeding the speed, and it's a dangerous zone. So with a, with a housing unit like this, it's going to add quite a bit of traffic at entrance to one point, which will probably, you know, cause a school bus stop, trash pickup. I observed the trash coming around, and I'm thinking, okay, 12 cans at one time there. So that's, that's somewhat of a challenge for the trash service. And when you look at the total number of single-family entrances off of Taylor Notion Road from the, from the Y all the way to the light, I think there's probably only about 16 to 18 in there. I mean, there are other entrances into Star Hill and in our development. So when you put that and you add 12 homes in one location, that's, that's almost doubling the amount of entrances on the Taylor Notion Road. And that's a huge concern. The next thing I'd like to voice a concern about is with townhouses. Ultimately, townhouses end up being rental property along the way. So with that, I'm not sure what type of covenants may exist, but certainly it could become an eyesore on a major corridor within our community there. So I ask that you give concern to that as well. That's, those are the things I'd like for you to think about before deciding.
Thank you, Darrell. Charlie Evans.
Good evening, my name's Charlie Evans. I'm a resident of 213 Taylor Notion Road. And I thank you guys for your deliberate and thoughtful work that you've been doing for this town for the last number of years, some of you, quite a few. I'm fundamentally a property rights guy. I understand the need for developmental ordinances for CAMA land use plans in this area for our quality of life. Some of those things are necessary to guard that quality of life. My only concern with this plan is I, I would like assurance, and I haven't been able to get it yet, that this particular rezoning request does not apply to any other R30 properties in town. As long as it applies to no other, I, I get that somebody may want to make another change later, but they have to go through the rezoning process for each one, and I'm okay with that. But I want this rezoning request to apply uniquely and specifically to 123. If anybody can give a north-south head nod on that, some of us may be a happy camper, some will not.
Is that not what we're meeting about?
That's exactly what we're meeting about.
Res zoning request on 123.
Does it, does this request only, I know that you're not supposed to take questions. Does this request only apply to 123?
Yeah, if I could, if the board would allow me. The request tonight only applies to this one parcel. If there are other property owners that request rezoning, they would be considered on their own merits by the planning board and ultimately the board.
That was my question. Thank you, Frank, appreciate it.
Thanks, Charlie. Jennifer Parks.
It's Paris.
Paris, I'm sorry.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jennifer Paris, and I live at 522 Quillwood Court, Cape Carteret. We've been down this rodeo. I've walked the neighborhood in Star Hill North and in Star Hill, all around Fox Drive, all the way down there. I got signatures. I listen to the people of our area that this affects. Nobody wants this. Y'all don't listen. I guess the only way is with a vote. But the bottom line is earlier this year, y'all already zoned...
They don't touch on that.
Y'all already zoned a couple of parcels of land for townhouses. And, okay, you know, but this opens the door for a slippery slope. The neighbors in this neighborhood, the surrounding areas, do not want this. They told you that. They're concerned about property values, traffic, everything. This is not going to be a walkable neighborhood anymore. What poses another landowner to go and get it rezoned? And if you did do this, I would want it in writing that this would be the only parcel that would be available to do that. I mean, it, it's ridiculous that you're not listening to the neighbors. You're not listening to your constituents. Everybody's gone through this rodeo, and they don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Patricia Rudeman.
Thank you, my name is Patricia Rudeman. I live at 315 Star Hill. I have to tell you, I'm really conflicted by all of this. The four acres that you were talking about is directly across the street from me. But I kind of think that in some ways, we're approaching this from the wrong direction because at the meeting that was, that took place in October, nobody wanted anything. We, I was in fact told that I needed to move if I wanted to have something that was over 55 neighborhood. That it just, to me, we're, we're going to an area where we're exclusive, and nobody else should come into our area, especially the Star Hill area. That's the vibe that I'm getting from all of this. And I don't think that it's realistic. I don't think that we can, in the future, be an exclusive neighborhood. And I concern myself with whether we would be accused of redlining. And at some point, whether it's now or five years down the road or whatever, we are going to have to have housing other than single-family homes. I think that this is the time that we could zero in on exactly what those requirements would be with the 40-foot setbacks and all the rest of that. So like I said, I'm really conflicted by this because I would be impacted if they took that four acres and did, and did something with it. But I'm not sure that it's, that it's a completely negative thing. And, and like I said, I do think that we have to think about the legal ramifications and that we have to also be looking forward because change is going to come. And the more control we have over it, the better off I think we're going to be. So probably not a very popular sentiment right now, but that's what I have to say.
Thank you. And Mrs. Holtz, you have the last word.
I get no respect.
All right. I represent one of the property owners adjacent to this property, Star Hill Golf Club of Cape Carteret, North Carolina, NC Inc. I serve as the president of that corporation. And by vote of its board of directors, they have instructed me to tell you that they are completely in favor of this rezoning. We would like to see more homes in Cape Carteret, and hopefully, some of these owners will play golf. We certainly hope so. Now, some of the statements that were made are really, really puzzling. This already zoned a couple of parcels for townhomes. Well, that's just not true. There have been no parcels owned for townhomes that I'm aware of in Cape Carteret ever. So that's just a mistaken, most, most of these statements, some of them are mistaken. Those condominiums next to the property proposed for rezoning, unlike Ms. Gold's statement that this is in the midst of single-family zoning, there are four condominiums right next door to it at this moment. And furthermore, those condominiums were built and existed prior to any one of these people coming to Cape Carteret, because I've checked, because they were built in 1973 by the owners of Star Hill Golf Course. So this rezoning concerns only this parcel that's been established, and I don't think it sets a precedent at all. The owners of Star Hill as the most closely associated neighbors are in favor of this rezoning, make no bones about it. We think it's a good idea, and we're in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is all we had signed up for the public comments. So entertain a motion to go out of public and back into regular session. Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? All righty, we are back in the regular section. Start off, I guess, anybody have any questions for Frank?
Frank, how many single-family homes did you say that property would accommodate?
Under the current zoning, they could achieve... Under the current zoning, they could achieve five single-family lots. Under the proposed rezoning, they could achieve six single-family lots, but in addition to the option for the multi-use. If I could, just to clarify a couple of comments, and hopefully to be helpful to the Board of Commissioners and the audience. I think the, I made the comment that our ordinance requires individual driveways and/or garages to accommodate the parking for the townhouse units. That is true. However, there would likely be one common driveway or one access road, perhaps two access roads. And then, once that access driveway was constructed into the interior of the parcel, that's when you'd have the individual parking spaces. So, I don't envision any scenario where you'd have 12 separate driveways coming out the Taylor Notion Road. That's not the spirit and intent of our ordinances and not permitted under that zoning. The other comment that I wanted to just clarify for everyone, there have been no recent rezonings, at least in the past year. There are two parcels in the entire town that are zoned R10M, and they've been zoned R10M for many, many years. One is a 12-acre parcel. It's actually located in the ETJ, so it's not in the town. It's this parcel right over here, if you can see my cursor, which you can't. It's, it's right here behind the Culligan Water Distributor on Highway 24. And then, there's an additional parcel that's four and a half acres, give or take, at the end of Live Oak Road. Those are the only two, and they've been zoned R10M for some period of time. But to my knowledge, were not rezoned anytime in the recent past.
Any more questions? Comments?
I have one. This is for Brett. And just so we're all clear, this sets no legal precedent to years from now, if another owner wants to come, of a parcel wants to come to the board to request an R30 to R10M change, or any change, really. The fact that this parcel has been zoned, and this single parcel alone has been rezoned, it doesn't give them any, doesn't set any precedent, doesn't give them any advantage, things like that.
Correct. It means a legislative decision, so the board can decide yea or nay for any individual parcel. I will say that, you know, sometimes boards look at similar parcels. If there's another parcel of the size in a similarly situated area, that could be an argument in favor of it, right? But the board doesn't have to honor that. It's a purely legislative decision, and whatever policy the board wants to adhere to at that time, they can be able to make that decision. So rezoning as opposed to what we had before, which is the special use process, that's where, I think back in October, we had the room was pretty full, and you have different criteria set. At that time, we didn't have all the standards that this board has since adopted. So, all these standards are now in place with these folks. If it, if it is rezoned, we're going to have to apply by standards ahead of time rather than get in there and kind of do what they want to do with it.
And just one more question, if I could, if that's okay. Just going down the list here, insofar as trash pickup, that would be addressed in their, in a site plan type review, wouldn't it?
That is correct, yes. We would not anticipate 12 individual containers out on the street. There may be 12 on the interior of the property, or there may be a dumpster for this, depending on the specifics of the plan that the applicants might put forth.
I understand the developers here this evening. Does anybody have, or have any questions for him?
I have one question. Based off of your plan, do you know how many townhomes are going to be in there?
Twelve.
Twelve? Okay.
All right. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'm going to make a few comments.
Okay, you're right ahead, Steve.
I'd like to echo what Frank and Paxton Hulse said, that we did not vote on any rezoning at the last quasi-judicial proceeding for a special use permit. That special use permit was withdrawn, request was withdrawn. So, we did not vote on anything. Okay? This is the first meeting that I know of of rezoning this piece of property. I cannot think of a single town in Carteret County that does not have R10M zoning. Okay? I want to thank the planning board for going through this and coming up with what I think is the right decision. It's consistent with the town's KAMA comprehensive plan, and I support it 100%. I think it's time for Cape Carteret to offer some housing diversity like the rest of the communities near us. But I think it's also important to remember, we're here for rezoning requests. There's been no development plan rezoning. I mean, development plan submitted. The owners could change their mind tonight, or whatever they want to do, but we're here tonight for a rezoning plan. So, to talk about how many townhomes, blah, 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 that's putting the cart before the horse. That's all I have to say. And I would like to make a motion to adopt this ordinance changing the 123 Taylor Notion Road from R30 to R10M.
All right, any more, any more discussion?
Listen to the people that live here.
Sir, you've, you've had your chance. We had public comment, please. We're trying to let these gentlemen vote. So, we have a motion, excuse me, sir. You're being disrespectful. Anyway, back to the motion. We had a motion from Mr. Martin, a second, by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any more discussion? If not, then all in favor. All right, motion carries. All right, next up on the agenda is the presentation of
Keep speaking out. You're going to have to leave. Do you hear me? If you keep speaking, you're going to have to leave.
Presentation of the 2023-24 Recommended Budget. Right?
Mayor Baker, Commissioners, I'm very pleased tonight to present the recommended budget to the board and to the community. I'm pleased to present it tonight and look forward to your discussion at special budget workshop meetings that are scheduled for next Monday, May 15, and also on Monday, May 22, with additional meetings, if necessary, to be scheduled by the board, hopefully culminating with your adoption of the budget at your June 12 regular meeting, if you're comfortable at that time. So, ultimately, this is your budget, the six faces at the dais and the six faces on the screen. And hopefully, I presented a recommendation that reflects your priorities and your goals for this community. So, back in January, we held a half-day-plus budget planning workshop meeting where the board had an opportunity to discuss their goals for both the short term, over the next year, and also over the long term for improvements in the community. So, this entire budget recommendation is put together based on what at least I perceive to be your collective priorities as the leaders of this community, as well as individual comments and collective comments made over the past year, as well as some of my own observations about the community and the organization. But at its core, it's set up to address these budget and future capital goals that I'll go through very quickly. I heard you all talk about the need to maintain the current property tax rate. In January, we talked about potentially decreasing the property tax rate if there's an opportunity to do so. Another goal incorporated into this budget is for Cape Carteret to be a self-sufficient town, to be very thoughtful, to be very strategic about quality of life improvements for the residents and property owners in this community, whether that's through enhanced services, whether that's through improvements in the community, maintain the high service quality that we currently are fortunate to enjoy here in Cape Carteret. Heard loud and clear, we need to complete the final segment of the Cape Carteret Trail. Loud and clear that we need to make stormwater improvements, continue to make stormwater improvements a priority in this community. Talked about increasing the frequency of our vegetative debris collection program. I talked about the need for a high-quality police department. Talked about investing appropriately in park improvements, those quality-of-life infrastructure improvements that hopefully people in the community will enjoy now and in the future. Talked about doing a better job with development review and particularly with code enforcement activities in Cape Carteret. Consensus to make the Fall Festival bigger, better, and our signature special event here in Cape Carteret. Talked about coordinating with NC DOT to improve the connections between the neighborhoods, improve bicycle and pedestrian safety, build a greater sense of community. And last but not least, give some thoughtful consideration to strategic acquisition of land in the town so that the town has options in the future for community improvements, whatever that may be, parks, town complexes, other facilities, police stations, what have you. Obviously, we've got a limited amount of available land in Cape Carteret. That number is going to continue to decline over time. So, those were the goals that I heard the board outline during our planning meeting on January 30th, and I've also heard them reiterated several times over the last year in your board meetings and just individual conversations. Those are all incorporated in some way in the recommended budget. In addition to those goals, these are some of the other goals that I had in mind as we put together the recommended budget. Make sure that the decisions that the board makes now don't negatively impact future budgets, so consider the future-year budget impacts. Provide meaningful but fiscally responsible salary increases for our town employees. They're our number-one asset. Obviously, we're in a period with high inflation in our society and our country these days. Want to provide something meaningful, but also that we can afford. Want to invest appropriately in technology, make sure that we're providing the best possible services for our customers, all of you, for our employees to do their jobs efficiently, and provide the best possible customer service that we can. There's a very deliberate goal to utilize some of our surplus revenues and savings in fiscal '22-23, the current year, in a strategic manner to make next year's budget easier and make some improvements. Want to maintain a strong customer focus. I want our organization to always be helpful, always be courteous, always be consistent, and provide the best possible customer service that we can. We are a service organization. We exist to make this a better place for the people who live here and own property here. Put a high priority on community aesthetics. I'm a firm believer that all of the little things that our staff does and that concern citizens in the community do to make this a nicer-looking place, all those little things add up and create a better image and a better experience for people in this town. Want to make sure that we're planning for future capital equipment replacements and strategic capital improvements. And then, last but not least, I never want to balance the budget with general fund balance, and you'll see that come through in the recommendation. So, again, those are basically, I guess, the building blocks for the recommended budget, again, based on the direction received from you all over the course of the last year and some of my own observations. So, the recommendation for 2023-24, in total, the total town budget, including the capital projects, is just shy of $3.4 million. That split, that split up between the general fund, a little bit more than $2.1 million, $2,108,266, $877,406 in a multi-year project account for stormwater improvements, and then, $408,000 for the completion of the Cape Carteret Trail. Adds up to almost $3.4 million. The general fund budget is obviously the, the main focus, the largest component of the town's budget. The recommendation for 23-24 is a slight increase in the annually recurring expenditures. It's a little bit difficult to draw a comparison because the town had a lot of rollover capital funds in the fiscal '22-23 budget. So, when you look at the numbers in the booklet, you're going to see this massive decrease in expenditures. And that's deceiving because those are one-time expenses. The annually recurring expenditures are increasing somewhat, very modest increase in the budget. We'll get into the details of that with you when we meet in the next couple of weeks. I'm pleased to present to you the budget that maintains and enhances the service quality. I think we can continue our current service levels. And I think we can make some nice enhancements in the services we provide going forward. And again, it does have some very targeted investment in community improvements that I'll talk about in a minute. The recommended general fund tax rate is 21 cents. That's a decrease from the current tax rate of 21.25 cents, so it's a 1/4 cent decrease recommended. Overall, Cape Carteret is fortunate to enjoy a relatively low tax rate. I'm very pleased to be able to recommend this slight reduction for your consideration as part of this year's budget. I'm also happy to report that there are no increases in any other town fees. All of the current fees would remain the same. There are no new fees. There's actually the elimination of a few minor fees that we really don't charge in a consistent way and really don't generate any significant revenue for, anyway, and some that I just think probably aren't worth the trouble to collect the fee for them. That's for public records requests, temporary sign permits, zoning verifications, and special event vendor permits. The recommendation in the fee schedule is to just eliminate those fees. In terms of the general fund revenues, you can see, as is the case, I'm sure, in every municipality in North Carolina, property tax is our largest revenue source. It's about 46.3% of the budget. Second-largest is the yellow. That's sales tax. That's about 24% of the budget. I would submit to you that that is the most important piece of the pie right there. That blue piece, property tax, isn't really going to change a whole lot from year to year unless there's a significant change in the rate. So, it's pretty dependable. We pretty much are, are pretty certain each year how much property tax is going to come in. The sales tax is really what makes or breaks the town's budget, and it's important for us to carefully monitor that and monitor the economic trends, both in our state, in our county, and in our town. Several other revenues make up the general fund. This third-largest category is unrestricted intergovernmental. It's right about 15% of your total general fund revenues. It's things like the profits from the ABC store. It's utility sales taxes, a couple of other smaller revenue sources. Your property tax revenues that we are projecting for next year in the recommended budget, it's almost $962,000. And so, the average value taxpayer in Cape Carteret, the average-value property is about $247,000. So, that means that that average-value property owner pays about $518 per year in property taxes to the town of Cape Carteret. When you look at the tax, property tax revenues, you're still going to see a really slight increase in projected property tax revenues. In fact, it's about $5,000 or $6,000 of additional property tax revenue, despite the fact that there's a recommended decrease in the tax rate. So, that recommended decrease of a quarter cent basically knocks out about $11,000 of revenue to the town. However, just from new construction and growth in the tax base, we're projecting somewhere in the $16,000 to $17,000 of additional revenue. So, at the end of the day, we're projecting a very slight increase in property tax revenues with that 21-cent rate. And just for planning purposes, every one penny costs or generates about $46,000. So, for example, if the board wanted to raise taxes for a particular purpose, every penny is about $46,000. If you wanted to decrease, you'd have to identify $46,000 of savings in the budget. Sales tax projected right about $506,000. Again, that is the most important town revenue. That's an increase of $90,000. That's an increase of 96,000, more than $96,000 from the fiscal 2223 adopted budget, that's pretty significant. And so the reason for that is that the estimate in fiscal 2223 was was overly conservative. We estimated about $410,000 in fiscal 2223. When in fact, we'd actually brought in about 460 for the year that had just ended. So a big chunk of that increase in sales tax revenues has really already been realized. Beyond that, we think that we will bring in somewhere around 495,000 or so in sales tax revenues for the current year, and that's a conservative estimate, we've done very well on sales tax this year. I really think it'll probably be more than that, but we've tried to take a conservative approach here. And then we factored in a 2% growth rate for next year's budget for sales tax. Over the last four or five years, you've been seeing about 8% per year, so I think it's still conservative, but if I could tell you what the economy was going to do next year, I probably wouldn't be sitting here talking to you, so. But again, a conservative estimate, but but I think a reasonable estimate. So here's a graph of your sales tax revenues over the last five, six years. You can see in fiscal 1819, we were at 372,000. For this current year, we actually, we project 497, 443, and then just a 2% increase projected for next year to get us to 506, 504. Some of the other key revenues, we'll go through the other smaller ones at the budget workshop, but the ABC profit distribution, about $160,000. Utility sales tax, we're estimating about 140,000. Those two numbers are pretty consistent with what we expect for the current year. Actually, maybe slightly less than what we project for the current year, but pretty much coming in, we're projecting again on target with what we expect to see this year. The Powell Bell allocation, almost $91,000. The legislature is poised to approve a 10% increase in the Powell Bell distribution for all municipalities, so that reflects that projected 10% increase in the appropriation from the General Assembly. We're looking at about 78,000 in boat ramp permit fees, we've simply budgeted about the same amount as we received in the current year, actually it's just slightly less. And again, there is no general fund balance appropriated to balance the budget. So when you look at the expenditure side, and this is the case in just about every town in in the United States. Police Department is always the largest expenditure, it's about 35% of our budget. If the fire department was part of the town, you'd see that right up there as the second one, I'm sure, but the fire department's obviously not part of the town of Cape Carteret. Some of the other key expenditures, administration is 25%, Public Works is 11%, Solid Waste is 10%, and you can see some of the other categories here. So my perception, my belief is that the general fund budget honors the board's priorities. It's been carefully crafted based on the short-term goals that I heard you express, as well as some of the longer-term goals we've talked about. So some of the specifics included in the recommendation, the town planner code enforcement position is fully funded. That person will be dedicated toward development review, inspections, not building inspections, zoning inspections, other code enforcement services in the community. The total amount budgeted for that is 75,707. That's a net increase of 54,629 over last year's budget, there was some part-time funding included for those services in the fiscal 2223 budget. There's $27,816 for information technology improvements, the board approved a contract at your April meeting for new computer equipment and support services, security investments and so forth. We have switched our vegetative debris collection to, and every other month, six times per year, opposed to four times per year, sufficient funding included in the budget for that. There is 20,000 for an improved Fall Festival. 10,000 of that would be earned from sponsorship revenue, we brought in about $6,000 in sponsorship revenue in the current year. So we'll be making a concerted effort to increase that number to 10,000, and then there's 10,000 from the town included in the recommendation. There is $15,000 budgeted in the recommended budget for park improvements. That could potentially fund whatever recommendations come out of the Parks Improvements Committee. For the outright purchase of maybe smaller items or potentially potentially could be a local match for a grant in the future. That committee's hard at work and we expect you'll get their recommendations probably in the September-ish timeframe. Included $15,000 for bulkhead improvements at one of the water access parks. Essentially, the plan would be to allocate funding each year to do one of those parks every year. So for example, we did Ferry Landing Park this year, you may want to tackle Anita Ford or Manatee or one of the other locations in the future years. There's a grand total of 105,378 for street resurfacing. That's a combination of the Powell Bell funds that I just mentioned, almost 91,000. As well as a recommendation to earmark the special motor vehicle tax that the town collects specifically for street resurfacing, that's about $14,000. That's a $5 fee that every registered vehicle pays to the town, generates about 105,000. That's 16,000 plus more than was included in the approved budget, we're going to talk about streets here in a little bit. $20,000 for part-time police coverage, trying to hopefully entice some part-time officers to come and join our force and supplement our full-time officers and provide some relief and provide some better coverage in the community. There is a 5.3% cost of living increase included in the recommended budget, that $54,000 cost is spread across the various town departments, that number is completely consistent with the change in the Consumer Price Index as of March of this year, which was the most recent data available. The April data should come out probably within a week or two. That 5.3% is pretty much in line with what I've seen many other communities recommending in North Carolina. Several of the local towns in our area are talking about 6%. The range in a league municipalities survey that I saw recently was anywhere from 2% to 8%, so it's really kind of all over the board. I try to match the CPI change to try to help our staff just keep up with inflation and hopefully feel like they're not sliding behind. I'm pleased that the recommended budget has sufficient funding to maintain our health insurance benefits for town employees. We're fortunate, we only saw a 5% increase in premiums this year, quite frankly, I was pleasantly surprised with that number. That adds another $6,800 or so in cost, again, spread across the various departments. One thing that's not in the recommended budget is any funding for vehicle or equipment replacements. That's kind of a double-edged sword, on the one hand, our fleet is in relatively good condition, basically all of our police cars are brand new through the Enterprise Fleet Leasing Program. However, and our Public Works vehicles and our Public Works equipment are in good shape, so there's really no glaring need for vehicle or equipment replacements right now. But that's something that I would just caution all of us that we need to devise a plan for that over the next few years to make sure that when these cars are aging out. We've got the resources available and can keep our staff in in good quality vehicles and good equipment so they can be efficient. And equally important, present a good image of the town. There is a total of $55,824 for those police vehicle leases. There are six vehicles, we've got two and a half years left on three of the vehicles and three and a half years left on the other three vehicles. Couple of the other smaller notable items, we're trying to do a better job keeping the Highway 24 corridor looking good and clean. Our staff did a very thorough manual cleaning of the Highway 24 area in the last few months. We've got $5,000 included to contract street sweeping to make that a more efficient process. $4,000 for another employee to get a commercial driver's license, right now we only have one staff person who can operate our brush truck. So we want to make sure we've got a backup in the department. The total solid waste contract, that contract includes an automatic CPI adjustment. And it's a different CPI calculation than what I just described for the employee salary increases. There's a 6.9% increase programmed in. And so in grand total, the collection of trash and recycling is about $128,000. There's an election in November, so we're going to have to pay the county for that, there's funding budgeted for that. And there's $24,000 for legal fees included, that's a significant reduction, sorry Brett. From the from the current year budget, we had about 39,000, but we're trying very hard to be judicious in our use of those services and really trying hard to keep the town out of trouble and conflict if we can, so feel good about that part of it. Town's in good shape overall financially, we've got a really healthy fund balance. Projecting that it'll be close to 2.4 million at June 30th. That's, you'll notice I use the term adjusted fund balance, that number includes about 2.2 million of unassigned fund balance. And it also includes about 170,000 of what they call stabilization by state statute, and it's essentially just sales tax revenues that are earned during that fiscal year, but we don't get the payments until July 15th, August 15th, September 15th. Regardless of how you slice it, we're fortunate. And that's a credit to the people at this table and the people who came before you, the people who came before me. The current year, I am projecting about $193,000 surplus, that's from a combination of revenues coming in better than anticipated, as well as some savings in the budget. And that's after we allocate some of the current year surplus for some key things. As the board knows, I've been working on a plan to make some modifications to the town hall building to accommodate the police department. This projection assumes there's funding allocated for that, I hope I'll bring you a contract for that in June. It includes the street resurfacing funding that we'll talk about in a few minutes in the next item. Some other, there's there's funding included in the current year for a bulkhead if the town wanted to do one of the water access parks between now and June 30th to add a bulkhead, and then some various small public works items. So if we don't do any of those things, we would probably add close to another, maybe $100,000 to the fund balance at the end of this year, probably not quite that much. The fund balance is equal to about 113% of your fiscal 2324 budget, that's, we're in good shape, thankfully, so kudos to folks who came before. I would recommend to you that we preserve some portion of the fund balance for any future capital opportunities. One of the goals that we talked about back in January and we've had several other conversations about is if an opportunity presents itself to acquire some land, that might be strategic for the town in the future. Having that healthy fund balance just gives you more options to make that happen in the future, obviously clearly a board policy decision. A graph of the fund balance over time, you can see back at June 30th, 2019, it was about $1,150,000. Projecting at the end of June, about two, almost 2.4 million, so good position to be in. There's also a continuation of the multi-year capital project ordinance for stormwater improvements, again, 877,406. I am hoping to bring you construction contracts for Sutton Drive and Arden Oaks at your June 12th meeting. And Bog Sound Drive soon thereafter, we're also going to talk about Neptune Drive in just a minute with the street resurfacing. If we go forward with all of those projects and the costs, the construction costs come in generally close to what the engineers have estimated. I still think we'll have somewhere in the 340 to 390,000 range available for other locations other than those four. So we'll tackle other locations that are on your list, once we get these four locations completed, hopefully prior to the the worst of the hurricane season this year. Again, the Cape Carteret Trail, continuing that multi-year capital project ordinance. There's a total appropriation of a little more than 408,000. The design work is continuing for the final 1.1 mile segment. I expect that we'll have somewhere around 352,000, 353,000 available for construction. We are also awaiting a decision on a $100,000 grant that would go toward the project as well. I've got my fingers crossed that it will be sufficient to complete the 1.1 mile remaining segment. And hopefully have folks enjoying that sometime later this summer or early fall. One of the things that I had hoped to present to you tonight, that I am not, but I hope to perhaps next year or maybe even sooner than that. Is a formal capital replacement improvement program, a five-year plan that basically lays out all of the equipment replacement that will need to occur in the coming years. And then any capital projects that you all believe are important to move the community forward. And plan those out with realistic revenue estimates, grant opportunities, fund balance, whatever the case may be. It's going to be important for us to match our projects with the goals of the various state and federal grant programs and hopefully align well with their goals to move some of these things forward. So I intentionally didn't bring that forward for you at this time. Because I think I need to listen to you more about what things are more important to the six of you. Learn more about what's important to our residents, to our property owners, but continue that process that we started that conversation. I listed some of the projects that I think will likely make their way into a future formal capital plan. Obviously, additional locations where we need stormwater improvements. Any of those additional water access parks where we might put in bulkheads. Any park improvements at the non-waterfront parks, perhaps that the committee will come up with. Land acquisition for a future public boat ramp facility, obviously we have the lease in place for Manatee Street until 2031. But that may be something to include in the plan. Additional bicycle path segments, would really like to identify a way to, for example, connect Bay Shore to Old Cape Carteret. I'd really like to find a way to provide some safe crossing of NC 24 so that Old Cape Carteret and Bay Shore can get to the the triangle area and to Star Hill and so forth. The town center concept, hopefully will move forward at some point, if there may be a desire for public facilities in conjunction with any private investment in that area, that may be something to think about. Any wastewater needs in the future, land acquisition for a future town park, maybe a town government complex. And then any Highway 24 improvements, safety improvements, bicycle paths. Again, I'd like to see some sort of safe crossing of the highway. All of these things that have come up, all of these things are things that have come up in our discussions. And rather than put those forward in a formal plan right now, I felt like I needed to spend a little more time with you all working on the future. So looking ahead, I think the fiscal 2324 recommended budget, I typo up there, 2324 recommended budget, it's generally conservative. It's structurally sound, I don't think it has any holes in it in the future. We do need to plan accordingly for future vehicle and capital equipment replacements. We need to come up with a strategy for additional street fund, street resurfacing funding. We have about 20 miles of streets in the town, I would like ideally for us to do about a mile each year. That's probably somewhere in the 200 to 225,000 range. One of the ideas we'll talk about during your budget workshop meetings is maybe consider increasing that motor, special motor vehicle tax, not as part of this year's budget, but just in the future. And then also, you know, just seeking grant funding for anything that is aligned with the goals that you all have for the community going forward. So I like, I always like to put the town's budget in perspective. So I told you a little bit earlier, the average value property owner is going to pay about $518 per year, about $43 a month. Yeah, that's a lot, but it's not all that much when you consider other things that we all typically spend our money on, whether it's your internet bill, your smartphone. If you get a cup of coffee every day, depending on whether you go to Starbucks or whether you go to the gas station, it's still probably more than the $43 per month that folks are paying. Other things on there too, so I think the people of Cape Carteret are fortunate that it is a relatively low tax rate and a relatively low cost for town government. And again, that's that's kudos to the folks who've come before and have set that precedent. I like to look at, you know, what does government really cost you? So for example, one of the things you'll see in the budget booklet, I know it's hard for the audience to see this from there. But there's an itemized receipt for all of the town services, so for example, police services in this town cost the average value property owner about $16 a month. So if you kind of look at it that way, like a So if you kind of look at it that way, like a subscription, that's what your police services are costing, about $16 a month. Now, if you have a, a home that's valued more than 240 some thousand dollars, you're paying more than that. If it's less than that, you're paying less. But I like to try to illustrate to folks what they're actually getting for their money. So that's included in the booklet. And by the way, the, the whole recommended budget booklet is on the town's website. There's also a copy available in town hall if anybody would like to, to take a look at it. Look at the other nearby towns, probably not the best comparison most of the time because every town's different, right? Every town has different priorities, different characteristics, different types of property. But Cape Carteret's got a relatively low property tax rate. Those are all the towns in Carteret County, along with Swansboro and Havelock, which are real close by. We're on the lower ran, lower end of the range or the middle part of the range. Again, I think people in Cape Carteret are fortunate for that. There's a total of 15 full-time positions in the recommended budget. There's no net increase. That town planner position that I mentioned earlier is a reclassification of an existing position, the current year's budget in public works. So there's no net increase in positions. Tax rate's been stable at 21.25 cents for many years. We're gonna have to be thoughtful and strategic to keep that rate stable and consistent in the future, and I feel like we can do that. And the general fund balance, I, I'm pretty sure it's probably the highest level in the history of the town. I didn't go back and look that up, but I can't imagine it was higher than it's, than it is right now at any point in the past. So that's the recommendation. And so as I described earlier, I wanted to present it to the board and the community tonight to give you hopefully a decent understanding at this stage of what's in there and what the thought process was behind it more than anything else. There's a budget workshop next Monday at 6 o'clock in this room. There's another workshop two weeks from tonight at 6 o'clock in this room. That's the official public hearing. We've advertised that as such, and you'll receive official comment, although I know you'll welcome comment from anybody at any time. If you're comfortable, I would ask you to adopt the budget at your June 12th regular meeting. If you're not, we should take as much time as you all need to make sure that you're comfortable with the budget. By law, as I'm sure you know, you need to adopt it by June 30th to meet the statutory deadline. And the last comment is that this recommended budget that I described is the town manager's recommendation. Hopefully I listened well. Hopefully I've developed a good understanding of the community's values and the community's needs. But at the end of the day, it's your budget, and you all need to make sure that this budget reflects your goals, your priorities for the community. So you should absolutely adjust this recommendation in any way that you think is best to, to reflect your priorities going forward. Again, hopefully I've listened well, and we've been thoughtful and put together a recommendation. But I look forward to working with you in the coming weeks, and we can adjust it in whatever way you think is best. So thank you. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Frank? Any questions, comments for Frank this time? All right, next item on the agenda is the 2023 street resurfacing contract.
So there are two items for your consideration tonight that essentially would result in the award of a contract in the amount of $216,880 to Thomas Simpson Construction. They're based in Morehead City. It would enable the resurfacing of approximately one mile of town streets in Cape Carteret. So you have a resolution authorizing that street resurfacing contract. And then you also have a budget amendment that would allocate an additional $51,514 from general fund balance to meet that contract. And that amount is included within the projections for the current year that I just shared with you. So the fact that I projected we'd have a surplus of $193,000 takes this additional appropriation into account. We went out for bids in April for, we started out with 1.8 miles included in our bid packet. We took those bids in April, and not surprisingly, the bid amounts came in far exceeding our budget. I expected that they would come in a little bit over, but they came in a lot more than I expected. And so Ryan Hutchinson, our public works director, and I got together and reviewed the street segments that we had included in the bid package and put together a revised scope of work that includes one mile of streets. It includes four tenths of a mile on Bay Shore Drive, and all of the streets are identified in yellow on here. So it's four tenths of a mile on Bay Shore Drive from NC 24 down to Park Avenue. It includes a couple of small segments on Edgewater from Bog Sound Drive to Lejeune Road and also Live Oak to Easy Street. That's about a tenth of a mile. It includes Club Court in that same area. Here's Edgewater up in this area, includes Club Court. Basically from Bog Sound Drive to the end, including the cul-de-sac, that's about a tenth of a mile. It includes Rock Court, cul-de-sac. Let's see, included over in this area right here. That's less than a tenth of a mile. And then it also includes Neptune Drive from the northern terminus of Holly Lane, heading due east, making the 90-degree turn to the south down Neptune, down almost to Bog Sound. And so that adds up to just about one mile. Again, the total contract amount, 216,880. Thomas Simpson Construction was the low bidder by both calculations, the original 1.8 mile scope as well as the one mile scope. And so the recommendation is to award the contract to Thomas Simpson. I mentioned that there's a $51,514 budget amendment that comes out to a total of 16,404 from our restricted PAL bill fund balance. So that's money that's sitting in fund balance, that's previous year's PAL bill funds that were never used. And then there's 35,110 that would come from other general fund balance. That would be added to our current year PAL bill funds, 82,646. And it would also be added to 82,720 in that stormwater improvements, multi-year capital project account. And the reason the recommendation is for the funding from that account is because there's a stormwater concern right at the 90-degree turn in Neptune Drive. And our intention is to resurface the street, do some wedging, tilt the street in appropriate ways to resolve those stormwater concerns. Also have Ryan and his staff make some improvements to the catch basins in that area. And we think we can resolve the stormwater concerns at that location. And again, we would, hopefully by the next couple of months, we'll have solved four of the locations on your list, including the Neptune Drive. So all of that adds up to 216,880. The other street segments that we had included in the original scope of work would certainly like to have included those in the recommendation, but at a certain point, it's just a matter of balancing the, the resources you have with the needs that are out there. In our review of the various street segments, we felt like the ones included in the recommendation were, had the greatest need. We were also trying generally to keep the street segments within relative close proximity to each other. Instead of sending the contractor back and forth all over to different parts of town, we're trying to generally cluster them, obviously trying to deal with the stormwater issues on Neptune. And so the intent was to focus this year on the Bay Shore area. Next year, our intent would be to focus on the Star Hill area. And then the following year, the intent would be to focus on the Old Cape Carteret area and try to get in a three-year cycle where we kind of move from each of, from one residential area to the next, to the next, and so forth. Again, hopefully going through a process and identifying some additional resources for street resurfacing as well. So that's the recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have about the recommendation. If the board approves the contract, I would expect the work to occur later in May or sometime in June. The, the one last thing I wanted to mention to you all is that in my time, almost a year here in Cape Carteret, I've heard a lot of comments from people in the community about Gulf and Dolphin Drive and the poor condition of that street, really near the Starbucks and the Walgreens and so forth. That is a private street. Certainly don't intend for the town to fund those improvements. I did however, talk with the contractors and talk with the commercial property owners in that area to include Gulf and Dolphin Drive in our bid package, really just to facilitate it, to try to help make that happen at their expense. Thankfully, they were very supportive. Initially, we thought that cost might be in the $40,000 range, and I think that they were on board with contributing and paying their share to make that happen, again with no expense from the town. Unfortunately, that segment came back with a cost of about $95,000, and the scope of the project increased dramatically from what I had anticipated initially. So that's not included in the recommendation, and I don't expect that to go forward based on the bids that were submitted and included in your packet. We are however, continuing to talk with the contractor and with the commercial property owners. I'm actually gonna meet them out there tomorrow and just try to brainstorm some ways that we can come up with a good solution out there, again at their expense, but hopefully make a nice improvement in the community. Hopefully we'll come up with something. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Frank. Any questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Frank, this Neptune Drive paving project that's 1,800 feet in length, is it being paid for entirely by stormwater funds?
That's the recommendation, yes.
Okay. And that, that Neptune Court was one of the hotspots, if you will, for the, the flooding issue. That, that will take care of that, is that correct?
Yeah, and, and just to make it clear, it's Neptune Drive. So it's that long segment from Holly Lane down to the corner near Deer Creek and then making the turn south down to Bog Sound.
Okay. Are you using any MOTV funds for this paving project?
MOTV?
Special motor vehicle tax?
Not directly.
Okay.
You could probably make the case that indirectly we are just because we're appropriating general fund balance. And clearly the recommendation in next year's budget in the future is to earmark that for resurfacing, but not specifically.
So in other words, after this paving project, MOTV fund balance is gonna remain the same as it is today?
I'm gonna make sure that I'm understanding you correctly because I don't want to mislead you in any way. So the, the town collects the special motor vehicle taxes, $5 per vehicle.
$5 per license.
We generate, I think, somewhere around $14,000 per year. There is no specific allocation of the current year funds for this street resurfacing. But again, the fact that we're using fund balance, you could make the case that it's being used. In the future, that amount that I included in the recommended budget for street resurfacing is the sum total of PAL bill plus that special motor vehicle tax fund going forward. And I hope I'm not getting you confused.
Well, you are a little bit, but the, I think the current balance, Sandy may correct me, there's 20, around $28,000. And so that, after this paving project, we should still have on that, in that budget line, 28,000, correct?
No, we, we have a.
Excuse me, in the, in the revenue side.
Yeah, so the, the current year budget relies on about 14,000-ish of the special motor vehicle tax. And that money is coming in as expected. We'll meet the budget target for that. But there's no fund balance allocated of the special motor vehicle tax. There is fund balance from the PAL bill distribution that's earmarked separately. We would talk of, this recommendation is to just spend that money completely.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask that is the MOTV tax was started to maintain the trail. That was the mindset, but.
I understand.
Okay.
And that's an important policy decision for you all.
Just want to make sure we're okay.
Sure. Yeah, so it's not specifically tied to it with this. That's the recommendation going forward, and you all may agree with that, or you may not agree with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any more questions for Frank? All right, so we need two motions. One would be for the resolution authorizing a street servicing contract.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Say, all in favor? All right, the second part about that would be to approve the budget amendment to transfer. Make that motion. All right, second. All in favor? Thanks, General. Next up, we have appointments for two planning board vacancies, and you guys should have all the contestants.
Mayor Baker, board members, just to be clear, I think there's two ways you could go about making the appointments, and it's completely your, your decision. If you'd like, you can take each one of those vacancies and make a motion to appoint an individual to fill that vacancy and take a vote on it. That's perfectly acceptable. Or if you prefer using a ballot, there are two blank ballots at the back of this agenda item that you can use. Keep in mind, one of the terms expires in May of 2026, would begin immediately. And then the other term would begin in June and expire in February of 2024. So I would encourage you that if you use the ballots, to use the ballot for one seat, get the results of that, and then move forward and, and use the ballot for the second vacancy. But whether you make a motion or use the ballots is completely up to you all.
Is there a consensus from the board that just?
I'd like to use the ballot.
Okay. All right, guys, you got the ballots.
I got a question before we start.
Go ahead.
Couple of names here, just want to make sure.
With the town attorney. I think Ms. Peel is, is not a full-time resident of the town. Is it my understanding that anybody can serve on the planning board, or do you have to be a full-time resident?
Well, you know, requires residency.
Full-time residency?
It just says residency.
So am I to take that if you're part-time, you can serve on the board?
If you, if you think that this is your primary place of residency, and I think this is the individual's perspective, so Frank reached out to her and to confirm that this is the place that she considers her primary residency. This is where she votes, things of that nature.
Okay, so she, she is eligible then?
Yes.
Okay, and I'd like to point out two names also, Mr. Jinks and Ms. McInerney are alternates on the current board of adjustment. So if there, if we put them on the planning board.
We'll have to fill those positions.
We'll have to find somebody to replace them on the.
Off the track. Right, it, it'd be important to note that they would have to resign from the board of adjustment in order to serve on the planning board.
Okay, but they've been indicated they want to serve on the planning board, so.
They have indicated, they have both applied to be on the planning board. They will need to resign from the board of adjustment. We've not specifically asked them that question, but I think that's understood.
Okay. I'll just sit here.
If you print your name under your signature, just so.
Yeah, for the record.
Yeah, that way we can read it.
Talking to me?
I guess just to make sure we're all clear, I would encourage you to just use the ballot for the May 2026 appointment right now and have those results read, and then, so then consider your ballot for the June 20, or I'm sorry, February 2024 position, because it may be that the person you voted for didn't get selected for the first seat, and you may want to consider him for the second seat.
Frank, on top, does that have like a hanging chair under it?
Chair. For a special.
I vote three to two, Mr. Alex Quintella for the term ending in May 2026. Now I'll pick up the term ending in June 2023. I'm sorry, February 2024.
Yeah, yep.
So Ms. Laura Nelson has received three votes. So that's a majority, so she would be.
Laura Nelson?
Laura Nelson.
So so we have Alex Quintella for the term ending May twenty twenty-six and Laura Nelson for the term beginning in June and ending February twenty twenty-four. And we will reach out to both of those individuals and get them oriented prior to their first planning board meeting.
And next up is the town manager report.
I've just hit a few of the more significant items. So first of all, the the employee health insurance, the town purchases that through the North Carolina League of Municipalities. We have a deadline of May fifteenth to let them know if we want to make any changes or renew. I've included the funding in the budget to renew the to cover the five percent increase in the premiums and basically would not change any aspect of the town's health insurance program with the exception of adding just another plan design option that would cost the exact same amount of money per month for the organization. So if you all are comfortable or don't object to me renewing that, I'll go ahead and communicate that to them. If it's something you want to spend more time talking about, then we can certainly do that. Schedule another meeting this week or perhaps talk about it at your workshop meeting on the fifteenth. But it's a five percent increase. It's a relatively modest cost, and the employees, I think, are generally pleased with the program. So if I don't hear any objections, I'll go ahead and communicate that. The the first concert, Sounds by the Sound, is this Wednesday at six thirty, right behind us. Your very own Will and Tony show will perform, half of which is sitting next to me. And so hope folks will come out and enjoy that. And I want to thank Landmark Homes. They recently installed a new canvas cover over the stage out back to provide shade for the performers, and we certainly appreciate that generous donation from them. I mentioned earlier, should have Sutton Drive and Arden Oaks construction contracts on your agenda in June. Excited to move forward with those. Good cooperation from all involved on that, so appreciate that cooperation. I mentioned the town hall modifications that I'm working toward to move the police department into this building. Expect to present a recommendation to you at the June meeting. Several other things included in here. We're hard at work on the Fall Festival. We're actually going to meet tomorrow with some volunteers and Mayor Baker and Commissioner Martin to talk about some ideas, working toward making that a larger, better event for twenty twenty-three. If you have any questions about the other items in the written report, I'm happy to answer them, or if you have questions about anything at all, I'll try my best to answer it.
Any questions for Frank? If not, then we'll go on to the commissioner reports. We'll start with you this time, Commissioner Watts.
Okay. I have nothing other than a Parks Improvement Committee update. We met last month talking about the citizen survey. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a survey. We're going to try to collect the data for what people want and don't want for the parks. We finalized that. We discussed a strategy for getting public input. This is probably going to be walking door-to-door. And so we also will probably set up at some of the concerts, not not this one, we're not quite ready yet, but we're going to set up at some of the concerts and some of the events to capture some of that citizen input. We also discussed our schedule. Like I think Frank had briefed earlier, we do hope to wrap this up and have something presented to this board, the August, September timeframe. And then the next meeting, we're going to just be talking about how to divide up the town amongst the members. These are the members that will be going door-to-door, trying to collect input from you all, the citizens. So please be patient with us and please work with us. Tell us what you want, what you don't want because it's going to be those that information that's presented to this board, and then we ultimately go and try to actually improve some of these these non-waterfront parks. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Frank and the staff for all the hard work they do on a daily basis and especially thank you for excellent budget presentation and for the hard work that you and your staff put into putting this together. Appreciate that.
I echo what what Commissioner Miller just said. Thank you, staff, and Frank. What is urgent is whatever work you have put into this budget.
Charlie, look forward to talking to you on Monday about it. Thank y'all for coming. Well, I just got a few things. Just want to cover sort of what Frank did about this Wednesday with our Sounds by the Sound. This was brought back to life. I got to give credit where it do by John Ritchie, and he runs owns the Landmark Homes, did the cover. So he contacted the Seaside Arts Council, and they got some sponsors. So along with Landmark Homes, we have our own Dr. Scott and Deanna from the gym. So all this is being supported by our town businesses. I think it's awesome. So if you can, the weather's supposed to clear out. We're going to have Capone's food truck here as well. So come on out. Didn't cost a town a dime. So I think it's great. We can get something like that for our community and and we have a great support from our businesses that are going to support something like that. I think that's awesome. So if you can, come on out Wednesday. It'll be great. And I think that's pretty much all I got, other than, like I say, thank you for a great sort of snippet of the budget, what we got to talk about coming up next week. I think that's awesome. There are fire and rescue. I think I mentioned that on the last meeting one before. You will see an increase in that now that board decided. I think a cent each for fire, one cent for fire and one cent for your rescue. So you will see an increase coming from that. I think there was, I had a meeting with Commissioner Farrington and Commissioner Quinn this past week. So there are some issues they're having in the county right now as far as their software stuff regarding the taxes and the revale and all that. So if you've been waiting for some issues to be resolved with the county, hang in there maybe another maybe another month before that gets resolved. I don't know. If you want to know more, contact them personally. That's what they're there for, absolutely. And thank you all again for coming out tonight. I wish the other people would have stayed. I understand people get very emotional about things and and the issues we have in the town. I I get that. I really do. But the main thing is we're all neighbors here, and whether we agree or disagree, we can be civil. That's what I hate is, you know, the gentleman leave. You know, we need we we need to give people their right to speak. Everybody had a right to speak here, and they could he could have signed up just like everybody else did and spoke your opinion for or against. So that's the one beautiful thing I love about this town. Everybody has a voice. But let's be let's be civil about it and respect everybody's opinion. And then let these gentlemen do their job. That's what they're here to do. And and I think this board has done an awesome job since I've been the mayor here, and I have nothing but good things to say about this town staff, especially. Saw you guys working down the road, getting some brush up, going around. So can't say enough about our staff. You guys do awesome work. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Excuse me, I missed. I'm sorry, we have closed session. Let me put my glasses on. Please forgive me. Sometimes I I forget things. So with that, I will entertain a motion to to leave the regular session and go into a closed session. I'll make that motion. All right? Second, all in favor. I apologize once again. But thank you all. Appreciate you being here.